Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And I'd also like to note that we have Chairman Benson on the phone with us tonight. He had a prior commitment. We'll need approval of tonight's agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, I'd like to invite up to the podium the Piedmont High School JROTC for the presentation of the colors and Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to invite up Reverend John Karpatriot to present this month's John H. Crowder Service Award.
For over three decades, John H. Crowder dedicated his life to supporting Union County youth. In honor of his enduring contributions and lasting impact, the Union County Board of Education presents the John H. Crowder Service Award every month to recognize exceptional high school students who actively contribute to their school and community. Recipients of this award excel academically and possesses a well-established track record of community involvement. Tonight, we award the November John H. Crowder Service Award to a Porter Ridge High School senior. Kennedy Williams is an exceptional student who demonstrates leadership in the classroom, in athletics, and throughout her community. Over the past four years, she has successfully balanced rigorous coursework while fully emerging herself in a variety of clubs and organizations she's passionate about. Kennedy serves as a cabinet member on the school student council and vice president of the National Honor Society. She is also a leader for Pirates for Christ and the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. In addition, she serves as a light keeper on the Leader in Me Lighthouse team and is active member of the Emoji Club, Beta Club, and Science National Honor Society. An all-American track athlete, Kennedy has qualified for the state championship each year and is also a competitive member of the varsity women's tennis team. Her leadership in the community is exemplified through her work with you. As a mentoring coach, she trains young girls in speed, agility, and overall track development. Through her mentorship, Kennedy strives to empower young athletes to grow in their skill, faith, and leadership. She plans to study food science in college with the goal of becoming a missionary and food scientist in the future. Board members and those who have joined us tonight, please join me in congratulating Kennedy Williams as the November 2025 recipient of the John H. Crowder Service Award.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Dr. Kevin Flew with this month's Influencers winners.
Thank you. Good evening. We're excited to celebrate two outstanding employees who have been named UCS Influencers for October. This program recognizes the dedication, passion, and exceptional work ethic of UCS staff members who go above and beyond daily. What makes the UCS Influencers program special is that these honorees are nominated by our staff, students, families, and community members, the very people who witness their positive impact every day. I am honored to present Jana Manery, a fifth-grade teacher at Western Union Elementary, and Sandra Calhoun, a custodian at Piedmont High. I will now invite the nominators to the podium to read the submission and recognize their honorees' accomplishments. Angela Welch, can you please come up?
Good evening. I am Angela Welch, a parent of a student at Western Union Elementary. Ms. Manery, please come forward and join me. What can one say about the best teacher in North Carolina? There's so much to say, but I'll give it my best shot. Ms. Manery is a one-of-a-kind teacher. She goes above and beyond for all of her students. She is compassionate, dedicated, trustworthy, and most importantly, she wants to see her students succeed. Ms. Manery makes every day a fun learning experience for her students. She takes the time to really know them, their strengths and their weaknesses, both as a group and individually. She listens to her students whether they're talking about things happening at home, at school, or in life. She really cares for her students. Ms. Manery takes the time to make sure these kiddos truly understand what they are learning. And if they aren't understanding, she takes all the time needed to make sure that they do. She's amazing at communicating with the parents and really wants to prepare the fifth graders for sixth grade and for the real world. Ms. Manery is so much more than a teacher to her current and past students. She's a teacher you can never, ever forget because of the impact that she leaves.
Good evening. I am Kim Canty, a health and physical education teacher at Piedmont High School. Ms. Calhoun, please come forward and join me. Sandra Calhoun consistently goes above and beyond her role and is a true example of dedication and service. No matter how busy she may be, she will stop what she was doing at any time to help a student or staff member and does it with a smile on her face. Her work ethic, positive attitude, and caring nature make a difference in the lives of everyone on our campus. She takes great pride in her work and in our school community, but what sets her apart is the way she genuinely cares for people. Whether she is offering a helping hand, a word of encouragement, or going the extra mile to ensure our school is welcoming and safe, she influences others through her kindness and selflessness. Piedmont High School is better because of her.
I will now read the UCS Influencers proclamation from the Board of Education and Dr. Houlihan. Whereas the Union County Board of Education values the hard work of each employee within the district, whereas performance is an essential part of district operations, whereas Jana Manery and Sandra Calhoun exemplify the performance, dedication, and teamwork essential to the success of the district and its students. Now therefore, we, the Board of Education for Union County Public Schools and Dr. Andrew G. Houlihan, Superintendent, hereby proclaim Jana Manery and Sandra Calhoun as the UCS Influencers for the month of November 2025. Congratulations on this outstanding honor and thank you for all that you do to be a positive influence on others each and every day.
Our next item on the agenda is the Budget Update and Supplement Increase. And I'd like to recognize Chairman Benson, who is on the phone, and give him the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see so many faces and so many familiar faces. So thank you all for being here. I want to begin my comments on this item with a few updates on how school funding works in the state of North Carolina, as well as the timeline of how we got to this evening. School systems in our state receive funding from three primary government agencies, the federal government, state government, local government. Boards of education rely on all three agencies to provide funding and do not control how much funding they receive. Boards of education also do not have taxing authority. That means that they cannot legally raise taxes for the purpose of providing additional funding or additional dollars. That is the legal responsibility of the Board of County Commissioners and the state legislature. Each year, boards of education, when they vote to approve their budget, is a vote to approve a budget request. The key word in this statement is the word "request." It is not a promise. It is simply a request. That request is then sent to the Board of County Commissioners, who again, are legally responsible for determining how much funding will actually be allocated to the Board of Education. Again, I want to really hone in on two key words, "request" and "allocated." Those are two different functions. The Board of Education requests the funding. The Board of County Commissioner decides how much to be allocated. In May of 2025, our board approved and requested a total local budget increase from the Union County Board of County Commissioners in the amount of $14.6 million, based on the needs of our school system. That request included a $2,000 supplement increase for all teachers and staff paid on the certified teacher skill. Also included in this request was any projected cost that the school system would have for what we call mandatory expenses. Examples of these expenses includes payments to charter schools, utility costs, operational costs, insurance rates. Just like all of us have to set an annual budget for our household and for us as individuals, the school system has to do the same, and we must account for those mandatory costs. That funding comes right off the top of any funding that we receive. In June of 2025, the Board of County Commissioners approved a local budget increase for us in the amount of $8.8 million. That is $5.8 million less than what was requested. The Board of County Commissioners and the Board of Education have already publicly acknowledged that the $8.8 million increase was not enough to provide the $2,000 supplement increase. As we started the school year, we as a staff decided to pause on moving forward on any local salary increases. We always were committed to coming to this board and to our teachers with a teacher supplement increase either in November or December, when the uncertainty of the state budget became a little more clear. Why is this important? The state budget has a direct impact on our local school system. The state budget allocates funding for teacher salaries. This board does not. This board can only be legally responsible to advocate for those increases and to implement supplement increases based on funding we receive from the Board of County Commissioners. When the state gives raises to our employees, we must account for the same degree of raises for anyone paid on the local side. And we were waiting until all of those discussions were held and finalized and were certain that the General Assembly would not move forward with any additional funding. We also have to plan for any changes at the state level that might impact our mandatory expenses, such as hospital rates, health benefits, and insurance. Again, we always had a plan on this item to move forward, but we paused. And I want to be very clear to everyone who might be listening or here tonight. The UCS Board of Education and I, as your superintendent, have always supported teacher and staff compensation increases at the state and local level. Each year that I've been your superintendent, a teacher and employee salary increase has been part of our budget priorities and has also been included in the Board of Education's legislative agenda. As a reminder, last year, this board redirected $4.4 million of our own funding in order to provide all teachers with a supplement increase. And I said at the time, that is not a sustainable strategy in terms of a funding allotment. Should the board approve the $1,000 supplement request this evening, UCS would have provided a $2,150 increase over the last two years, which is the only and largest two-year increase during my tenure as superintendent. I want to thank all of our employees for their hard work, for your commitment to our wonderful schools, to our phenomenal school system. Do our teachers and staff deserve higher pay? Absolutely. Absolutely, they do. As a former second-grade teacher in this state, I can certainly agree that our teachers are not paid and our staff are not paid an appropriate wage. They do so much to make our school system the highest-performing school system in the state of North Carolina, and you all have my commitment to continuing to advocate at all levels of government for increased compensation on an annual basis. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move that this board adopt the recommendation from the Finance Committee to provide a $1,000 annual supplement increase for all certified instructional staff retroactive to July 1, 2025. This motion does not need a second because it came out of finance.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up the floor for any discussion.
Mr. Chair, I would like to, or Mr. Vice Chair, I would like to request Ms. McLam, our CFO, to come up. I did have a couple clarifying questions and statements.
Okay.
Good evening.
So, as Dr. Houlihan said, we have three different means, three different branches of government that provide us funding, right? State, federal, and local.
Yes.
We, as Union County, with our affluency level, are considered what's called the Tier 3 county, correct?
Correct.
That means we get less of an allocation from the state and federal government as the other tiers do, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we rely then on local government to make up the difference. Is that also correct? So I know we talk about the local government funding, and they were giving us kind of slightly over the minimum according to the formula that they have, correct?
Correct.
So therein lies some of the gap that we're currently seeing. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I know you share this with us regularly, but based on our county designation, can you let us know, like, what is our ranking statewide?
Right now, state funding, we rank 113 out of 115 school districts. Federal funding, we rank 115 out of 115. Our local ranking is 37? No. Yes, 37 out of 115. So that gives us an overall ranking statewide as 110. That is, as of our year, we just closed out. That's the most recent information for 2025.
For the number-one performing school district?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. So with the $1,000 stipend we're proposing tonight, where would that put our Union County teachers' compensation relative to the rest of the state?
So right now, we're operating at 37, which was the average of 6341 that we presented in our budget. An additional $1,000 would put us to number 18, based on the information that I have right now. I don't know what other districts have done yet for this year, but that would put us to 18.
Okay. Thank you. One more kind of question and statement. So I've heard questions about, like, declining enrollment at, you know, for UCS.
Yes.
We have seen fluctuation year-over-year, 1,000 here or there. What does that do to our budget, right? Like, we still have the same number of schools that we need to maintain, correct?
Correct. We still have operating.
Same support, staff, operating costs.
Yes.
So the fact that we may lose 1,000 students doesn't really, it actually hurts us from a funding allotment standpoint, right? But our costs are continually rising, right? They're, we need to maintain. We need to support those buildings. But in addition, we have our cost of living inflationary adjustments that we have to make as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to call these things out. Like I said, I'm getting a lot of questions around that, and I wanted to just come out in public and make sure everybody kind of knew what we're faced with.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Ms. McLam?
Yes.
We commonly compare ourselves to what we call the Big 12. Out of the Big 12, where do we stand? Where do we rank with the Big 12 on funding? Do you know?
I guess it really depends on a per pupil basis. We have rankings that go based on state, local, and federal dollars. If you want to look at some of our neighbors, Cabarrus County is, local funding ranks higher than we do. They rank 32. They're overall 108. Johnston County is very similar to us. They're at 95. They're at 68 in their local funding. So they do have a better ranking than we do. It's really hard to say overall, but the Big 12 has varying ranking, total rankings overall. But we, being at the top, we're the lowest ranking of the Big 12.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Yeah, go ahead.
I'm not well-spoken, so please, if I get, you know, whatever. So I just wanted to say that I know we've gotten a lot of discussions, emails, and a lot of, from many teachers, parents, advocating. And I just want to say that I 100% support you guys. If I could have, I was at work, but if I could have stood out there with you guys, I would have. I know that's not the right thing to say, but I mean, for being on the board. But I'm completely and utterly, and I'm saying this publicly, disgusted with the lies that have come out of the county commissioners. Because it was, I mean, I sat there on Monday and listened to this, and it blew my mind that they just, it seemed like just stuff was just spewing out. And it was like, you know, and I've always supported our teachers getting an increase. I always. So the fact that they said that, you know, and to me, I know people here have said, oh, you know, we're all just, it's all political. I'm not here for the politics. I'm literally here because I was a mom fighting for my kids' rights, and that's what I stood up for. And I'm going to continue doing it for my kids. That, what they did, was political. So remember that, like you said. Remember that when you're voting, because there's people, it's election season. And I have nothing to lose. If you don't vote for me next term, my district, I served my time. I did my duty for my country. I did my duty for my state and for my kid. But just remember that. But we all, 100%, have always supported our teachers. And again, we requested a certain amount, and the fact that they just came around and kept turning it. And I know people said, don't keep making it. Don't keep going back and forth. The problem is, you have to get to the root of it. You can't just sweep it under the rug. You've got to find out what's going on, because the lie's going to continue. And the fact that, you know, they said that, oh, well, it's our job, the Board of Education's job, to request a tax increase. I was blown away when I heard that. And my mind was like, I looked at them. I was like, did you guys just hear that? Because I couldn't believe it. That's a local, the county commissioners. So that's my thoughts. I just wanted to share that with y'all so you knew where I was, because I 100% support our teachers. I've always supported our teachers. Like I've said a million times before, I am a product of public education. I grew up in New York. I know what it's like. So I get it. I know. I've been there since I was a child. So I get it. So I 100% support you guys, and I stand behind it. And I still think for the next budget year, you should continue to request more money and the 2,000 that was originally requested. Thank you.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Vice Chair. Good evening.
Yes, Reverend Karpatriot.
You know, I think somebody said it a few moments ago about us being the number-one school district in the state. And we are having a conversation in the month of November about funding educators, funding the school system. This is rather interesting that people are so heated right now, because for months, I have encouraged us to make a statement supporting public education. And we have not done it as a board. When the conversation when the conversation was had about we could do it, because during COVID, we had a resolution that spoke to not supporting masks and what have you. So it's not that we could not have done it. We chose not to do it. And the issue now, the issue that I'm having, is some of your friends and the county commissioners are showing us again who they really are. This should not even be a conversation that we should be having. Our educators are the hardest-working asset when it comes to shaping and developing a child's future and even their minds. And I watched some of that meeting. I didn't, I wasn't able to attend, but I watched it. And some of them was lying then, and they still lie. And that's just the reality of it. And their friends are a part of the General Assembly. And when we see what the initiative is when it comes to public education, where individuals are trying to defund public education, and you can sit here, people can sit here and be in whatever space and say they believe in public education, but when you're not supporting and helping them to have a livable wage and making sure that they do not have to work two and three jobs to support their families when they are not just teaching, they are social workers, they are food pantry operators, they are nurse, they're everything, providing clothes- they are nurse, they're everything, providing clothes because I did it. I was a TA for many years. And I did a lot of things that was not in my job description. But because of the love and the empathy that I had for kids and families, we did it. And these teachers are working extremely hard every day. And so I'm just, I'm like, I'm like Sandra. I'm disgusted, but I don't, I don't, I mean, I'm not shocked. I'm, I'm, I'm not shocked. I'm just sitting back, I hate to be laughing, but it's kind of funny to me how crazy they are. And we are continuously trying to advocate for teachers and people who deserve to live and not have to struggle. And so I hope, I know they're listening. I ain't got nothing to lose neither. At the end of the day, I've been the Lone Ranger for a long time. So it is what it is, you know? But it is important that they know, every last one of us sitting, every last one of you sitting in this room, there are some teachers who are not even in the classroom yet, but because they are nervous and skeptical about taking on a job and not knowing if they're going to be able to take care of their families, they find other avenues or other careers. There's a lot of teachers that are out there working that need to be in the classroom, especially in District One and all throughout Union County Public Schools, helping these young men see another way. Helping these young girls see another way. And so until we really invest and really not just talk about it, but really be about it and, and support what is, what should be a priority. Continue to speak up, continue to speak out because at the end of the day, people are going to do what they want to do, but at least they will hear your voice and know that we are concerned about our teachers. And again, I say, I am disgusted. I'm appalled. They are disrespecting you all. And it makes me feel as though if they're not looking to fund public education, maybe they're looking to fund something else. And that's the reality of it.
Yes, Ms. Green.
I'm sorry. I just, I know you said you were not shocked, but to be honest, I actually was shocked, especially when three of the board members on the county commissioner were on the school board. So just saying. That blew my mind. So that's where my shock came in. But that's all. I just wanted to clarify. But like I said, I stand with y'all and I will always support our teachers and and I, I, trust me, I know what it's like to struggle. So I get it. I, I, absolutely.
All right. Here, no more discussion. I'd like to call for a vote for Mr. Price's motion that's on the floor. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes nine zero. At this time, it's time for public comments. Up to sixty minutes have been allocated for public comments at each regular board meeting. The board does not respond to public comments, though members may ask the chairman to request clarification. Priority to speak is given to district residents, parents, students, and employees. Speakers must be present when called or forfeit their opportunity. Only individuals who have signed up may speak. Time may not be transferred or shared. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The board will not hear an open session. One, complaints about the performance of school personnel. Two, personnel issues. Or three, confidential student issues. Should a speaker wish to seek information or share items that may not be shared during public comments, members of the UCPS cabinet staff are available to address your concerns or provide information. Cabinet staff members are seated at the table to my left. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dash seventeen, any individual who willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts an official meeting may be directed to leave by the presiding officer. Failure to comply with such a directive may result in removal from the meeting and could constitute a class two misdemeanor. Please be advised that any member of the public engaging in such conduct will be removed from the meeting. Continued disruptive behavior may result in review of eligibility to attend future meetings. Our first speaker tonight is Hayden Martin. She's not here. Next speaker on the list is Megan Weatherford.
Good evening. My name is Megan Weatherford. I am here as a parent and an active volunteer in our schools. I'm here tonight for these wonderful teachers. As we all apparently agree, they love their jobs and care deeply for our children, but they also rely on these jobs. That puts them in a difficult position when it comes to speaking out. I'll be honest, I was disappointed to learn that you plan to vote before even hearing from us tonight. And while the vote went somewhat like we wanted it to, it also continues to be a pattern of making decisions first without listening, without communicating. The recent sick out wasn't about defiance. It was the canary in the coal mine. A signal that teachers are at their limit. They're stretched thin and they feel unheard. They are telling you everything that you need to know to help them stay here in Union County. As we've talked about and I've heard tonight, Union County is one of the top performing school districts in North Carolina. Our schools are recognized across the state, the region. People move here to go to these schools, at least for now. That success isn't accidental. It's built on the dedication of our teachers. Over the past few weeks, parents and teachers have watched as the Board of Education and the Board of County Commissioners trade public letters, statements, comments back and forth. Meanwhile, teachers and families are left in the dark. Union County schools aren't just falling behind in pay. They're being left behind. And make no mistakes, these teachers are going to leave us too. I believe teacher pay is not just a financial issue at this point. It's a moral one. It reflects what we stand for as a community and it shows where our priorities are. So whether or not, we, you passed the supplement tonight, my ask was going to remain the same. Make teacher pay a top priority. Go above and beyond for them just as they do for us. Communicate with them. Communicate with the teachers and the families and advocate for these awesome people on the county level and at the state level. Because when teachers feel supported, students thrive, and that's the goal that we should all unite on. Please don't wait for this to become a crisis that can't be undone. Fix what's broken before it's too late. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kelly Sinicola. Did I get that right? Okay.
My name is Kelly Sinicola. I'm a parent, speech pathologist, and former employee. So I know firsthand that we have extraordinary teachers who care deeply about our children. I also know the reality, limited funding, outdated materials, and a shortage of certified staff are serious problems. Our teachers are overworked, underpaid, and underappreciated. We have numerous unfilled positions, which leads to larger class sizes and additional strain on staff, all of which negatively impact student learning. Our educators give so much of themselves, their compensation should reflect that dedication. Pay hasn't kept up with inflation or rising cost of living. Our teachers and support staff, bus drivers, TAs, cafeteria workers, they're struggling to make ends meet and teachers can make more, higher wages at ABC Liquor without paying student loans back. Meanwhile, neighboring counties offer ten thousand more. We're losing excellent teachers daily. So my question to the board is this, how much longer do you think we can sustain this excellence? It was stated by the commissioners that the Board of Ed declined a tax rate increase to cover the cost of the supplement. I'd love an explanation as to why the Board of Ed would be asked if they'd like to raise the tax rate, since when does the Board of Ed have any authority in raising taxes? That responsibility lies with the commissioners. I think the community deserves to be informed of the exact conversation that occurred there. The commissioners also criticized the board for mismanagements of funds and for not prioritizing teachers. Parents and teachers, listen up. The commissioners had full information regarding the fourteen point six million requested, including the proposed budget for the two thousand increase. Still insulting, by the way. By funding only half of that request, they indirectly did not support the full supplement. Extremely disappointing. Meanwhile, other counties, thirty seven of them, all provided the local funding necessary to pay more than Union County. So next time, show up at the commissioners' meeting as well. The Board of Ed is not without responsibility. This board, specifically the superintendent, should communicate transparently with the community he serves. He withheld the information regarding the supplement. And when the funds were received, he's not been forthcoming regarding the claims that the commissioners have made, leading to the public distrust now of both boards. Dr. Houlihan earns about two hundred seventy-eight thousand a year. Meanwhile, the average teacher salary is forty-eight thousand. I support paying our leadership fairly. I, I, you deserve it, but the gap is the problem. Parents get involved. Contact Commissioners, Senator, and General Assembly. We've had enough. Estimated fifteen point six million dollars in taxes will leave Union County alone this year through the state vouchers program. Commissioners and the Board of Ed, you have to come together, rebuild our trust, stand alongside us parents and educators in demanding fairness and funding for our public schools. Both boards need to collaborate, collaborate and advocate collectively at the state level. Make education a top priority. Finally, a note to our teachers, whom I love and respect. You know that. Please review the research on the benefits of homework. Spoiler alert, there are none. Like, none. Please. Let's protect our students' time for rest, family, and creativity. And our parents, the parents do. They need it. So please, please, no more homework. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Reagan Shaw.
More than four hundred and sixty million dollars of our state budget has been paid out to private schools in this year alone. Those private school vouchers have no cap for income. Millionaires and billionaires get the money. That is why our public schools are going broke and our public school teachers' bank accounts are suffering. It's been, it's been one of the biggest transfers of wealth in decades, and it's getting worse. Our schools are resegregating, which is not surprising since school vouchers originated in the fight against racial integration. So how is this war happening? The first step was making local school boards partisan. The second step was to target the usual scapegoats and launch culture wars to demean our public schools. The third step was to strangle schools of funding, then blame them for underperforming. This is Project Twenty Twenty Five and it is happening all over the country. In Florida, they recently have had counties with no public schools. Imagine that, none, all charter and private. That is the end game. Some members of this UCPS school board are members of a Florida-based group that is funded by the private school lobby. UCPS board members were part of the propaganda push that got us into this funding mess. The private school lobby's plan is to demonize our teachers, accusing them of sexually grooming our children or accusing them of teaching students to hate white people. It's slander of our teachers and it's disgusting. Many of you propagated that culture war nonsense, demonstrating you don't trust our teachers either. It's why you police what they put on their classroom walls. They've been asked to take down signs saying kindness matters because heaven forbid they teach kindness to all. You didn't even stand up for our teachers when Melissa Merrill was trash talking them on a statewide platform. You, as a board, fed the extremist beast, and now we're all paying the consequences. This fight with county commissioners is over peanuts. Even at a two thousand supplement increase, our teacher salaries will still be shamefully low, especially with rising healthcare costs. And North Carolina will still be forty-eighth in the nation in per pupil spending. So if you want to know where our teacher salaries are, drive over to Bible Baptist Tabernacle off Waukesha Avenue. They have brand new school buildings, having received millions in taxpayer dollars. Keep in mind, their pastor has preached that girls who wear shorts deserve to be assaulted. This is how our taxpayer dollars are being spent instead of paying our public school teachers. Your silent complicity is what helped make that happen. You have asked us, why does advocacy have to be public? We talk to our state legislators all the time in private. ARP, Brody, Craven, Johnson, and Willis all count on your public silence to get away with defunding public schools at the state level. You share stages with these politicians, canvass for their political campaigns, and tell people to vote for them. Jen and I have been at the past thirty-seven Board of Education meetings, begging you to speak out about the funding tragedy unfolding. We keep telling you, hold town halls about funding, about the voucher robbery, about the Leandro money owed us. Hold informational Zoom calls for constituents. Sign and broadcast Reverend Kropatrick's funding resolution. Make an informational video. Educate the community about what is happening. Do it now before it's too late.
Our next speaker is Mr. Harold Schmoker. Harold Schmoker, Schmocker? Not here. Next speaker is Jen Sanders.
Good evening. I want to start by saying thank you. Thank you for standing up for our teachers and approving the local supplement, even without having a full budget from the county or the state. That decision showed that you believe and appreciate the very people who make Union County Public Schools what they are, our educators. You did the right thing under the circumstances. And tonight, I want to make this very clear. We are not your enemies in this fight. We are united front. Look around. It takes a lot of courage for these teachers to step in the light, wondering if they will face consequences for doing so. You're more powerful in numbers, by the way. This should not be a battle between the school board and the county commissioners. This is a shared mission to ensure that every child in Union County has access to a strong public schools staffed by dedicated and fairly paid teachers. We are at a crossroads. Our roads lead to accountability, transparency, investment in public education, the kind of that lifts entire communities. The other leaders, the other leads to privatization, voucher expansion, and the slow erosion of the very system that you have sworn to serve, public education. Vouchers might sound like choice, but that really is to create a two-tier system. One where some children are supported and others are left behind. That is not the Union County way. Our teachers are not asking for special treatment. They are asking for the resources to do their jobs and to stay in the profession that they love. Every dollar kept keeping the veteran teachers here pays dividends in student success, parents' confidence, community pride, and teaching our brand new teachers. As I ask this board to keep moving forward to this fight publicly, as we have mentioned multiple times, sign Reverend Kropatrick's resolution. Keep pushing for fair funding. Keep reminding the community that strong public schools are not a partisan cause. They are public good. And to our county commissioners who are listening, our teachers deserve stability, our students deserve transparency and consistency, and our taxpayers deserve a right to fund a public education. Let's stop throwing blame on the school district, the largest employer of the county, by the way. Stop blaming others and take responsibility for your action, commissioners. Elections have consequences. We have four school board seats and three county commissioner seats coming up. Filing day is in twenty-five days. If you want to see the change, be the change. Because of the end of the day, this isn't about bridges or turfs, budgets or turfs, it's about our children, our future, and to continue the value of the community that we believe in. One Union County, one future, from east to west.
Our next speaker is Pamela Carlton.
Good evening. Thank you, guys. First, I wanted to say thank you, Dr. Houlihan and Reverend Benchin, for having a meeting with us last week. And so we learned so much from that meeting. So we do appreciate it. And thank you, guys, so much for definitely approving that one thousand dollar supplement because that's why we're all here. You guys pretty much took half my speech, so. But I just want to pivot a little bit and just say that I know that there's, everybody's worried about this, this call out or sick out that's in the social media for the seventh and the tenth. So do know that we do not support that. My organization does not support anything that's anonymous on Facebook because we don't know where it came from or what it does. But what I want to say is that we acknowledge and we understand that the deep frustration that is felt by all of our educators in North Carolina. So with no state budget, no promised pay raises and increased healthcare costs, so the morale has been tested. And educators are rightfully angry. We got every right to be. But we do not endorse or will not participate in any anonymous organized social media campaign encouraging educators' call out on November the seventh or November the tenth. I mean, you have your own minds. You do what you want to do. Our power as educators come from unity, strategy, and collective action and not on isolated walkouts. So the way that we did tonight, the way that we are planning to do it from now on, is to organize like we're going to do. County commissioners, you will see us on the seventeenth. You will see us on the seventeenth. You will see us on the 17th, because we deserve that additional $1,000. So we are gonna advocate for that. That's our plan. So as we organize and prepare and we act together, we can make things happen. So that's what we plan to continue to do. So as we approach your upcoming legislative session, we're gonna urge educators and school employees to organize at their work sites and coordinate spring actions. That's gonna uplift the needs of students and schools and staff. So we're not gonna stop at Union County. We're going to Raleigh. We're going to Raleigh. Because it is time. It is time for legislators at the General Assembly to understand that we got a voice. We deserve to be respected, because we do more for any other profession in this state. And so we're coming. We're gonna organize it the right way it needs to be organized. Not that we're gonna close schools. We're not gonna try that, but when the Raleigh call comes, we're going. So just so we know, that's the only way we're gonna get it done. We have to stand together and advocate for what we want. So that's all I have to say. But thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Amy Brantley.
My name is Amy Brantley. I reside in the Cuthbertson Cluster. My children attend Cuthbertson, and I work at Kensington Elementary. I am here to voice my strong support for my children's teachers, your children's teachers, my colleagues, and myself. I appreciate the chance to speak to the board. I am deeply concerned about the lack of transparency that is occurring between the Board of County Commissioners and the Board of Education regarding all finances, especially the $2,000 stipend. Teachers didn't go into the teaching profession to make money. They chose making a difference in the future. Teachers relied on a steady pay scale to support their families. However, with the increase of cost of living and no raise, teachers are struggling. Many teachers are having to get a second or third job to make ends meet. We know that the state has not passed the 2526 budget. However, you, as the Board of Education, can help. You all can support teachers financially with our county supplement. Why hasn't our supplement been raised due to the cost of living and the knowledge that teachers haven't received a raise in the past two years? In the past five years, my monthly salary has increased by only $364. Where is all of this money going? Being the sixth-largest county in the state, how is this happening? Why is Union County not taking care of their teachers by increasing the local supplement to help teachers make ends meet? Are you aware that if I were to leave UCS and go and work at a neighboring county, I would make $11,000 more instantly because of their local supplement? Eventually, teachers are not gonna want to work for UCS when they know they can get a higher pay in another county. UCS is also not going to attract highly-qualified teachers. Our kids deserve better. I ask that better transparency be communicated with the public when important financial decisions are made regarding our children. Being on a school board is like being a teacher. It is a thankless job. However, I want to say thank you for your time and work to make UCS the number one in the state in proficiency scores. I am so thankful for all of the fantastic teachers our children get to see each and every day. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alina Brown.
Good evening, members of the board. Good to see you again. My name is Alena Brown, and I'm a UCS parent, a former UCS teacher, and a resident of Waxahachie. I stand before you tonight not only for my own children, but for every student in this county whose learning environment is being undermined by instability and inaction. A couple of weeks ago, roughly 700 teachers called out amid frustration that this board has not yet approved a district pay increase, or had not. Across our state, teacher pay remains among the lowest in the nation. And before you pass the buck to Raleigh and say that's out of your control, let's highlight the fact that Union County Public Schools offers one of the lowest local supplements as well, as illustrated by others. For a teacher with 10 years of experience, their annual salary in Union County is about 54,000. Think to yourself, if you've worked somewhere for 10 years and have a college degree, when is the last time you made that? You don't have to answer, we all know. Meanwhile, raises of $2,000 for our dedicated teachers who made us number one in the state just got cut in half, before we could talk about it, due to the state budget gridlock, but more importantly here, the insufficient local funding. Funny, though, our taxes sure did go up recently. Where is that money going? And whose pockets is it lining? It certainly is not benefiting public education or those pouring their hearts and souls into our kids every day. These local supplements are not numbers on a spreadsheet. They represent dedicated educators working second jobs, paying out-of-pocket for school supplies, and wondering how much longer they can afford to stay in the profession they love so much. When these teachers leave, our children lose stability, trust, and the mentorship that makes learning possible. And the real atrocity here is that while teachers wait for fairness, being told the money's not there, this board approved raises for itself. And while our educators struggle to buy groceries, pay mortgages, or access medical care, our superintendent here earns $300,000 a year. Yeah, that's not leadership, that's an imbalance. It sends the message that those at the top are comfortable, while those in the classrooms, the ones who make schools run, as we know, are just left behind. This board has power, influence, and responsibility. You represent the voices of our children, families, and educators. Tonight, many are asking you to use your voice both here and in Raleigh, demand or emphatically request the state budget be passed without further delay, and that the county commissioners fund the full 2,000 increase. Declare publicly that Union County will not sit quietly, pass a resolution, engage media, and partner with other districts to show solidarity. Protect classroom stability. Recognize that teacher pay is not political. It's the foundation of student success and community strength. Show our teachers and school staff they are valued with actions, not words or social media memes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nyla White. Did I get that right?
You did, thank you. Good evening. Ms. Bellamy, Ms. Martinez, Ms. Barbosa, Ms. Caro, Mr. Concha, Ms. McMahon, Ms. Kay, Mr. Broome, Ms. Bentley, Ms. Rivas Bay, Ms. Husing, Ms. Davis, Ms. Coon, Ms. Cook, Ms. Lashley, Ms. Dahl, Mr. Gearing, and many more UCS teachers have had a profound impact on not only my educational experience, but also how I've navigated this world as a person. Without the education that I received from UCS teachers, I would not be a graduating senior with honors at Union County Early College. I would not be receiving 84 credits from South Piedmont Community College, 23 of which are going to a community Spanish interpreting certificate. My apologies to everybody who was walking and just heard me talking in Spanish on the phone. I was in class. And 61 of which are going towards an associate of arts. I would not be as involved in my school as not only a student navigator for UCS, but also a student ambassador. I would not be as involved as I am on a community level either. I would not be an out-of-volunteer. And part of that does go towards my, does, part of that credit does go towards my parents, but it's also because of the education that I receive from people who are not only standing before you, but who are also showing up every single day. As a student, without the funding for public education, I would not be where I am today. I would not be applying to almost 30 schools, getting into them almost every single day. While it is evident that there is an east and west-side divide within our county, I was fortunate to have parents and educators that have consistently advocated on my behalf. But I realize this is not a reality for every single student across UCS or even across our state. Despite this, I am 99.99999% sure that every single teacher across not only this state, but across this county, shows up every single day, not for the pay, but because they care. So I urge you to continue advocating at the local and state level, despite public opinion, despite public commentary, but because of what you believe in your heart for the students across this top-ranked county on multiple levels, including test scores, who have teachers that show up every single day for them, but could not stand before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes tonight's public comments. Our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion, or no. Excuse me, I misspoke. Our next item on the agenda is the open session meeting minutes from October 7th, 2025. Need a motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Now, our next item on agenda is the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Our next item is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Hello again. As a reminder, Tuesday, November 11th is Veteran Day. I want to say a big thank you to all of our veterans, and especially to those who are a part of Team UCS. I hope you know how much we truly appreciate you and thank you for your service. This week is National School Psychologists Week, and this week also celebrates the contributions of our school psychologists and the important role they play. Next week is our Career Development Week, and these employees are the backbone of our CTE department. I want to salute our CDCs and school psychologists and let you know that what you do for our students is essential. Your work is invaluable, and we thank you for your dedication and expertise. If you missed it, last month, we announced that the UCS Annual Holiday Card Contest was starting, and now it's almost time to vote. Public voting will take place November 13th through the 20th, and information will be posted on school websites. The winners will be announced at a celebration right here at the PDC on Friday, December 5th. And finally, as we move into the holiday season, I want to wish each of you a happy Thanksgiving. I want to express my gratitude to our Board of Education, to all members of Team UCS, to our parents, and to our community. I hope you take time during the holidays to put work aside and spend time with your family and friends, and have a wonderful Thanksgiving break. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Houlihan. Our next item is board comments.
Just, we just wanted to clarify, yes, we, there was a vote for an increase in the Board of Education supplement. It did not pass. It was voted down, so we did not get an increase. We were, it was same thing. We just wanted to make sure y'all was clear on that. And happy Thanksgiving.
Any more board comments?
Matt, I'd like to harp on something Ms. Brown was speaking on. The tax increase in Union County. The question we should be asking is, where's that tax increase?
Let's have Madam Chair, do you still on the phone?
Vice Chair, Matt. Excuse me. But I do want to emphasize what Ms. Brown was saying, that the county did increase the taxes. And the question we should be asking is, where is that money going? What more are we getting from that tax increase?
And to, off of that, and I know Ms. Brown meant just, I know what she was trying to insinuate with Madam Chair. I get it. You know, there was talk, everyone saying, you know, again, the back and forth, saying that there was no transparency between the boards. Let's clarify again. We did not get any, we were not notified. They claimed that they messaged us? False. We have records and everything, people, we all know, you know, no one's reached out to me. No one reached out to, from chair to chair. So let's clarify that, because we're talking about transparency. I want to make sure we understand that. Go there. We're trying. That did not happen. So we want to make sure y'all understand that, because we're getting thrown under the bus and being rolled back over with the bus, and that's not what's happening. And, you know, it's just, there's, there needs to be clarification. Again, like I said, you can't just sweep things under the rug and just let the lies keep coming. So that's my, what? I'm just, that's, that's.
All right, no response to.
We'll do some digging, don't worry.
Any more board comments? Hearing none. That leaves us with announcements.
Policy will meet 11:18 at 8 o'clock via Zoom.
Thank you.
Facilities is meeting November 19th at 9:00 a.m., followed by curriculum at 10:00 a.m., both via Zoom.
There will not be a spit committee meeting this month.
Is finance meeting this month? Okay. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you.